I call this meeting to order. Please stand for the invitation and silence your electronic devices so we can conduct your business.
Heavenly Father, today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and we pray that you watch over our police officers and all first responders so they may safely protect us. We also pray for their families and the sacrifices they make when their loved ones answer the call. We thank you for the volunteers who show up to help when we are in need, especially those who helped during the recent blizzard. We pray for your guidance as we work to develop personal relationships with members of our community so we may better understand and respect each other. In closing, we pray for your strength so City Council may continue to be responsible stewards of our city. In your name, Jesus Christ, we humbly pray. Amen.
My pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, ever and just. Do we have a swearing in for the new chaplain?
I am Zachary Dawson.
I am Allen Square.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the City Charter of the City of Batavia, New York.
And the City Charter of the City of Batavia, New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Police Chaplain according to the best of my ability.
Police Chaplain according to the best of my ability.
I am not a chaplain.
Thank you.
Anything you'd like to say real quick while you're here? Zach, if you'd like to have a few words, you got a couple of floors for a minute, you just wanted to say hello.
Yeah, I'm just thankful that I get the opportunity to serve the police and the community in this way and to be a part of helping better any needs that are here and to be a support to the police officers and the department and then the community members as well. So I'm just thankful for the opportunity.
We have two proclamations. We'll start with Mr. Schwab.
Whereas, paramedic Wade Schwab.
Yes.
Wade Schwab is being recognized for over 13 years of dedicated service to the City of Batavia as a vital member of the Police Department's Emergency Response Team. And whereas Wade began his service with the City of Batavia Police Department's Emergency Response Team in September of 2009 as the team's only paramedic. And whereas throughout his service, Wade was instrumental in training emergency response team members along with other members of the department in lifesaving skills, assisting in writing policies and procedures, and has been a readily available lifesaving resource
privileged to work with such a great team of professionals, and I'm going to miss it
during critical incidents and trainings. Wade was the lead in coordinating emergency medical service efforts during operations as well as ensuring the safety of those involved.
very much.
Thank you, Wade. Now, Pastor Sherk.
And whereas Wade has served his community and the department with professionalism, dedication,
I was at the beginning, I wanted to be at the end.
Quite long, so it's going to be in there.
and compassion throughout these years, now therefore, in a true spirit of appreciation
Whereas Pastor Donald A. Sherk is being recognized for his 22-plus years of dedicated service
for over 13 years of selfless dedicated service to the City of Batavia, the City Council
to the City of Batavia Police Department as Police Chaplain and for his 36 years of
of the City of Batavia does hereby make this proclamation to sincerely thank Wade Schwab
dedicated service to the residents of the City of Batavia and surrounding community
for his service to our community and to wish him well.
as Senior Pastor of Grace Baptist Church. Whereas Pastor Sherk was appointed by Chief Mark Robinson on May 1, 2000, as the department's first Police Chaplain. Whereas throughout his career, Chaplain Sherk demonstrated commitment to not only the members of the Police Department, but the community as a whole. Chaplain Sherk is always available to the men and women of the department, day or night, for any emergency, crisis, or general counseling that may have been needed. Chaplain Sherk worked tirelessly to ensure the well-being of the members of the department by ensuring they had mental and emotional and spiritual support needed to face their duties and personal lives. He particularly focused on assisting the members, strengthening their personal and family relationships through unique workshops and meaningful interactions. Chaplain Sherk has been guiding and at many difficult times for the department members and also aided many members during notifications to loved ones following tragedies. Whereas Chaplain Sherk received his senior-level training certificate from International Conference of Police Chaplains and has been recognized on many occasions by the local law enforcement community for his steadfast support of the department and profession. It is recognized and appreciated that Chaplain Sherk touched many lives throughout his tenure, and his steady demeanor and guiding principles will be fondly missed, but not forgotten. Now therefore, in true spirit of appreciation for 22-plus years of dedicated service to the City of Batavia, the City Council of the City of Batavia does hereby make this proclamation to sincerely thank Police Chaplain Donald A. Sherk for his dedicated service to our community and to wish him well.
I do want to say thank you, just for the great privilege to be a part of the Community of Blue. If it were not for God's call in my life to the pastor, I probably would have had a career in law enforcement. And then with this opportunity came my way, I truly have been blessed to have the best of both worlds. And I just want to say it's been my great privilege to serve under four exceptional leaders and the chiefs that I've had privilege to work with. The late Mark Robinson, who appointed me, took a risk on this endeavor and frankly said yes to every single initiative that I thought might be of a help to the members of the department. And then for the other chiefs, Chief Daryl Sem and Chief Rain Baker, and now Chief Sean Hibush. And just a great privilege to work with these men. These are extraordinary men, and I've been so honored to serve along with them and in the course of time to also consider them as friends. And so I just greatly appreciate that. I also just want to say what a tremendous privilege it's been to serve the past and present officers of our community. We have extraordinary men and women in that capacity. No one has the kind of front-row seat into the challenges of dealing with the darkness and the brokenness of this world than our law enforcement community. And that can take a toll on you, and it's been my privilege to be able to come alongside with them and to help remind them that because law enforcement is God's idea, it comes with His blessing and His comfort and His strength. And then as well, I'm just so thankful for Pastor Zach Dawson and the confidence that I have in him in showing my shoes moving forward. Zach is highly relational. He is a very substantive man in his personhood and is nothing other than a true asset to the members of our law enforcement community. So I'm truly grateful for him being able to serve in my stead. And then finally, I just want to say thank you to the City Council for your tireless work and labor of love in your arena and for providing an opportunity like this for Gino. Like he said, he was in from the beginning, and if I ever go into battle, I would want this man by my side. I have the privilege to shoot with the range and such. He was a patient instructor, and we just had great times back in the day there. And then finally, I just want to say thank you. It was great privilege to be a part of the Community of Blue all these years. So thank you.
I guess I'm leaving. The BDC will not make a presentation, so we're unable to do a next meeting, so we're getting it done now.
How are we doing?
Good.
Thank you.
I mean.
Can we just open?
Counsel President.
Just open.
All right, Tammy, are you ready?
I am ready.
The computer is actually ready.
The computer is ready.
It's usually not ready when we're ready. Oh, thank you.
You are welcome.
Well, Council President Jankowski and council members, thank you so much for letting me present to you this evening. For 29 years, the BDC has assisted in with loans and grants and partnerships within the City of Batavia. Consistently, our focus is to recognize areas of potential growth, collaborate with partners such as the GCDC, Bid, Lobella Associates, and to identify resources that can aid in the business development arena here in the city. So why is economic development important? Because business and job creations both feed our sales and corporate tax base. Investing into building improvements generally increases tax assessments, which in turn increase the property tax we collect and possibly even added mortgage tax. Business and labor force snapshot within the City of Batavia. As per Greater Rochester Enterprise, 75% of the jobs within the City of Batavia are occupied by individuals who commute into the city to work. This shows us that Batavia is a desirable place to seek employment. In 2022, we had 612 businesses. 74% of these businesses have 10% or 10 employees or less. And seeing that, and that's the piece of the screen that's to the right, through these numbers, we cannot deny that small businesses are a critical component to our economic What are the top industries in the City of Batavia? Leading industries in our city are healthcare in the first place, manufacturing, retail, and office work. Crazy thing is that we have projects that feed into all of these areas, some of them a few projects that feed into each of these industry areas. So what do we do to make all of these employees want to work here, live here, and play here? The BDC utilizes the City of Batavia planning initiatives as shown on the screen as our own roadmap, syllabus, itinerary for assisting the business growth here in the city. I love this slide. This slide represents one of our projects that's part of the Batavia Opportunity Area, one of our brownfields. Brownfields are properties where the expansion, redevelopment, or reuse of them may be complicated by the presence of unknown substances. So how do we develop brownfields? Through the environmental assessments that we put the property through, we make the unknown known. Essentially, we are priming the property for redevelopment. Five designated opportunity areas that are brownfields in the city. You have Eloquent Station, which, if it was still light out, we'd be able to see behind me. The Harvester Center Campus, the Healthy Living Campus, Creekside Park, and the Building Room. The city center. The comprehensive plan is an itinerary full of recommendations of how we can create the work here, live here, play here concept. Aiding in the live here piece of the component, BDC supported projects that have created 119 residential units in the city. Two of the properties shown are bringing in six of these units with the potential of two or more additional units above the Main Street Pizza Company. Ah, the DRI. Downtown Revitalization Initiative. Revitalization, the action of imbuing something with new life and vitality. Eight projects were awarded funding through this initiative. Here happened to be three of those. Theater 56, the photo on the bottom is brand spanking new. I took that earlier this afternoon for you with the installment of the seating risers. Eloquent Place, the photo on the bottom, I just want to point out that you can see Eloquent Place and Eloquent Station, both in that photo. And then our beloved city center. Eloquent Place has some that, one of the projects that's feeding into the comprehensive plan of bringing residential units as well and the continuation of breathing life into the city center. The BDC has substantially completed three New York Main Street grant initiatives over the last decade. Over 20 projects were managed via the receipt of these awarded projects. The coordination of all components involved in a New York State Main Street grant can be pretty labor-intensive. So where does the value come from doing all of these projects, all this economic growth and dedication to bringing a project to life in the city? The BDC's dedicated efforts have championed 40 projects that have aided in tax assessment increases of almost $10.5 million. We aren't done yet. We continue to have funding available through our revolving loan fund. This year, we will see the Brisbane Mansion Reuse Analysis come to life and hopefully a successful continuation of the city center mall market. Thank you. I was little, I had 10 minutes. I stressed about that because I like to talk a lot, but I am truly grateful for your generosity this evening and additionally for your grace of allowing me to move tonight's presentation from last month when I wasn't feeling well. At our age as we get older, we don't always have a lot of opportunities to do something completely new in life, and economic development is quite new for me. I'm familiar with it, but I appreciate your opportunity for me to have this position. Now, thank you tonight.
Any questions? I asked a question earlier about the Eloquent Street corridor there, you know, maybe, you know, because I go back through every day and there's like ordered up businesses, and I guess there is some progress on them. We're not seeing it, but she tells me that there is some progress being made and that we might start seeing some physical progress in person in a few months when we start taking the order.
Right, absolutely. And as I've said, I have no problem talking. If you need me to, if something pops up on your radar and you want me to go make a visit, I have a list of places to stop from chatting with Gino. Bob gave me some great ideas this evening with the mall market, and I am always open.
Hi, Sheriff Tammy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks.
Do we need to just screen up or we got to do it?
You're on time. Perfect timing.
Nope, we'll take it down. Bye-bye.
Oh, I'll pull the screen. Sorry, Jane.
Who designed this? Should have been over there.
Camina and Woods.
Should have been in front of the window.
Thank you, Tammy, for the presentation. We've come a long way in the last five years, and it's nice to see the progress. So keep up the good work. Okay, PBA contract agreement. Rachel, did you want to?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I'm very pleased, especially that it is National Law Enforcement Day, to present the PBA Union Contract that is slated to begin on April 1, 2023. The PBA and the city negotiated this contract to benefit the members of the Police Department and the citizens of the city with the primary goal of equitably paying members of the Police Department, their road patrol when compared to similar cities of Batavia's size. During the preparation for negotiations, we looked at comparable cities and realized that the top pay in other comparable cities of road patrol was higher than our top pay, and that led us down a path of negotiations to try to rectify that in hopes that it would also lead to more retention within the workforce of the Police Department. Obviously, with other positions in the department, when there is a pay raise, they will raise to equitably to maintain gap integrity. The overall goal of providing fair wages for the members of the PBA was also, like I said, to combat against retention issues that we are seeing, so we're hopeful that this contract does so. I'm going to turn it over to Eric to go through some of the details.
Sure. In an effort to stay in line with our competitive cities around us, the contract initially has a one-time salary adjustment, and off of that adjustment, there will be raises of 3%, 2.5%, and 2.5% respectively in the out years. PBA came to the table offering to pay more in healthcare over the life of the contract, raising between 15% to 30%. We agreed to Juneteenth as an added holiday, as it has become a federal holiday as well. A one-time $1,500 payment will be made to each PBA member as part of the ARPA funds received by the city. The agreement will cost $107,000 for a one-time bump using fund balance for the 2023-2024 budget, and each year the costs will be $68,000, $59,000, and $60,000 respectively for the raises. I can tell you this was my first time negotiating a union contract, and both sides were very fair and open as far as our communications. We both brought a lot of respect to the table, and we both came up with what I believe is a very mutually agreeing agreement, which will provide our police with the much-needed benefits going forward.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have several questions, Eric. With this new holiday, how many paid holidays a year will they be receiving?
I believe 13.
I think it's 13.
13?
I think it's 13 and a half.
13 and a half.
13 and a half.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
Okay, and the next question, piggy tails on that. When there's a paid holiday like that, how do you, how do you cover? You still need people on duty, so how do we cover that?
Correct. Chief, I'll let you answer the paid.
So the officers have the option of taking a cash out for their holidays or using their holidays as a floating holiday, basically. So not everybody is off on, say, 4th of July. If they want to use July 4th, they have to wait for the holiday to pass or use it on the holiday depending on what their assignment is. So some of our detective bureau may take July 4th off because we don't have to backfill for them, but on road patrol, they have to abide by certain rules before they can take that day off.
Okay, so we don't have to pay overtime or anything to cover?
I would not say ever have to pay overtime to backfill for a holiday, but in most times we do.
Okay, very good. Thank you. The other question I have, why, what is the $1,500 ARPA payment? Why are we paying that?
So in part of the negotiations, there was a request to do a one-time payment. In other types of contracts this council may have seen before, it's almost like a signing bonus, but the request was made, and that was part of our negotiations. So the management believes we should make this payment to the membership.
Okay, and then one final question. In the spreadsheet you gave us, you show lieutenants' pay.
Correct.
And we don't have any lieutenants.
Correct.
So what, what does that mean?
Well, at any point, if we decided to add lieutenants back in as a position, they would already have a salary schedule determined.
Okay, so that isn't included in the overall cost, so correct?
No, because there are no lieutenants at this time.
Thank you.
Is that on one-time payment, does that bump their base pay?
No, it's a one-time payment like a signing bonus, basically, at execution of the contract to be paid out on April 1, 2023.
Got it. Anyone else?
I just want to say we have an outstanding police department, and retention is important, and I'm very much in favor of this.
After tax, that's about $100.
If I remember correctly, the other cities, we weren't even close. I think we were like near the bottom, maybe not. I mean, I'm just trying to justify. We're not just raising their pay because other people have, other cities have higher pay. It's like, it wasn't even comparable, as I recall. It was near the bottom, and it was, it needed to be adjusted.
The beginning pay for road patrol officers is very comparable to the cities we use, Geneva, Canandaigua, Dunkirk, and Olean. However, the top pay, ours topped out at $70,000 when the average of the other cities was $76,000. So making this adjustment makes us a lot more comparable.
Right, that's what I thought. Okay. Anyone else?
Okay, are we in favor to move this to tonight's business meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I think it's moved. The sale of equipment?
Thank you, Council President. The City of Batavia purchased equipment, including a John Deere Gator, a ride-on-reel mower, a bunker rake, and a walk-behind-reel mower. And let me just find the date for you, back when the Penn League owned or played at Dwyer. So this was back in 2020, right before the Penn League folded. The equipment has stayed at the stadium and is being used by Can USA, who operates the MukDogs. We realized that this property was being used by drivers that weren't city employees, so we sought to make a sale of the equipment to Can USA. These, the equipment was all bought used as well when it was purchased.
Yeah, I'm seeing like the 2015 John Deere, 2009 ride-on mower, 2012, 2010. So these are at best nine years old plus.
Correct, and I actually have the voucher from Matt Worth back when he signed in and purchased the equipment, along with all the VIN numbers and all the proper information to make the transfer, but we feel that it's very important that we take it off our general liability policy and that the people utilizing the equipment are covered by the workers' comp of Can USA. So we'd like to divest of this property in this, with the bill of sale.
May I ask, what did we pay for the equipment?
Yes, we paid $15,092 in 1/8/2020.
For all four.
Correct.
Gino?
No, it's a one-time payment, like a signing bonus, basically, at execution of the contract to be paid out on April 1st, 2023.
Got it. Anyone else?
I just wanna say, we have an outstanding Police Department, and retention is important, and I'm, I'm very much in favor of this.
After tax, that's about $100.
If I remember correctly, the other cities, we weren't even close. I think we were like near the bottom, maybe not. I mean, I'm just trying to justify, we're not, we're not just raising their pay because other people have, other cities have higher pay. It's like, it wasn't even comparable, as I recall. It was near the bottom, and it was, it needed to be adjusted.
The beginning pay for road patrol officers is very comparable to the cities we use, Geneva, Canandaigua, Dunkirk, and Olean. However, the top pay, ours topped out at $70,000 when the average of the other cities was $76,000. So making this adjustment makes us a lot more comparable.
Right, that's, that's what I thought. Okay.
Okay, are we in favor to move this to tonight's business meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I think it's moved.
The sale of equipment?
Thank you, Council President. The City of Batavia purchased equipment, including a John Deere Gator, a ride-on reel mower, a bunker rake, and a walk-behind reel mower. And, let me just find the date for you, back when the Penn League owned, or played at Dwyer. So this was back in 2020, right before the Penn League folded. The equipment has stayed at the stadium and is being used by Can USA, who operates the Muk Dogs. We realized that this property was being used by drivers that weren't city employees, so we sought to make a sale of the equipment to Can USA. These equip, the equipment was all bought used as well when it was purchased.
Yeah, I'm seeing like the 2015 John Deere, 2009.
Yep.
Ride-on reel mower, 2012, 2010. So these are, at best, nine years old plus.
Correct, and I actually have the voucher from Matt Worth back when he signed in and purchased the equipment, along with all the VIN numbers and all the proper information to make the transfer. But we feel that it's very important that we take it off our general liability policy, and that the people utilizing the equipment are covered by the workers' comp of Can USA. So we'd like to divest of this property in this, with the bill of sale.
May I ask, what did we pay for the equipment?
Yes, we paid $15,092 in 1/8/2020.
For all four?
Correct.
Do you have a question?
Since we own the stadium, and we owned the equipment, I'm just looking down the road, if Robbie Nichols isn't there at some point in time, and we have an empty stadium that needs to be maintained, are we gonna need that equipment to do it, or?
A lot of the equipment, we don't own ourselves. So we own things that are attached typically, like the carpet, the lockers, the walls. They own a lot of the kitchen equipment themselves, so this would be no different. And I wouldn't recommend that council supply any of that equipment to an operator that's not a city employee operating that equipment.
So looking down the road, if, if we find that at some point the stadium is vacant, with nobody to, to be a tenant, and we as a city need to utilize that facility, we would be able to take care of it, I guess?
I believe so, and maybe with minimal investment into other pieces of equipment, but we certainly do have equipment that we use to maintain city properties already. It might not be as specialized as this type of equipment, but we certainly can go out and mow the field.
And if somebody does decide to come in and use it as a, you know, at whatever level of baseball, then they'll be responsible to.
Correct. That's right.
It would, it would be up to the Can USA folks to decide if they wanted to turn this equipment over to the other people or not. We're completely out of that business after this sale. And it's, it's pretty old, right?
Well, yeah, it's not gonna last that much longer anyways.
So we're proceeding half the money back, basically, for what we paid for a couple years ago, and it wasn't doing that, so.
I, I would venture to guess that some of this equipment is probably never gonna be used again, or often. It's pretty old.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd just like to comment on the plus side, the savings certainly could be worthwhile for the city, because is anyone that has bought any parts for their snowblower or lawn mower recently, I mean, parts, if you can get them, are just gone through the roof. But the thing I don't understand is why it would make a difference if a non-city employee is operating equipment if we have a lease set up.
From the standpoint of who the operator is.
Yeah.
It's a little bit cleaner in terms of the operator, the employer, they have the insurance, while there was still a lease and insurance named the city. In this instance, the city wouldn't be involved as an owner of the individual piece of equipment. So the, the operator of the facility is employer, in charge of the equipment, owns the equipment, ensures the equipment, so.
And any training, I would assume that they need.
Correct.
Whereas, you know, we have city employees, we have control, we have their driver's license and things on file. These are not our employees. How would we maintain that record? How would we do that?
Thanks, George.
Anyone else? Okay, are we in favor of moving the purchase of that equipment to the tonight's business meeting?
Yes.
I think it's moved. The VLT for police equipment?
Thank you, Council President, members of council. The City of Batavia and the City Police Department have continued to look for ways to enhance the equipment and safety of the officers and detectives who work 24/7 to keep our city safe and serve our community. Tonight, I present the ability for the force to change their sidearm, equip members with AR-15, with the purchase of those for detectives in their vehicles, permanent speed control signs that we can erect throughout the city, and refurbishment of the camera equipment around the city. I'll pass it to Assistant Chief Camp and Chief Hybush to explain more and answer any questions you may have about this purchase. I will add that the city has not utilized VLT funds yet in this budget year, and we're coming close last three months of the end of it. We discussed these purchases as part of the upcoming budget, but decided that there wasn't room in it, so we thought it would be a great use of the VLT funds we did receive, we didn't budget for, to be able to make these additional purchases for our members in law enforcement.
Yeah, I'll pass it over to Assistant Chief Camp to explain the firearms program and the upgrades there, and then we can talk about the other.
In a nutshell, the City of Batavia Police Department is looking to transition from a 40 caliber sidearm to a 9-millimeter sidearm. In a nutshell, I guess the easiest way to explain that would be, a 9-millimeter offers a quicker recovery on target, more precise shooting, and it also offers a couple more rounds in your magazine. There's been a study that was published for the FBI in Bonaco in 2014, basically stated that the 9-millimeter projectile's come a long way, and its ballistics, in some instances, have surpassed the performance of the similar and larger calibers. As I mentioned, a lot of this is, you know, one of the biggest reasons is improved accuracy. We're always looking to be as precise as possible, especially, you know, if we have to get into a situation like this where we have to use our sidearms, I want all of our officers to be as precise as possible. And if the, you know, the studies are out that prove that this can help us do that, I would like to move forward and do that. There's also a little bit of a cost savings when it comes to ammo, albeit not a huge difference, but for example, you're looking at about a $40 per case savings of ammunition costs annually, you know, depending on how much we shoot, you know, so it's a little bit less expensive in that route. And, you know, like I said, the 9-millimeter has just come a long way. As far as the purchase of the AR-15s, we have a few detective vehicles that don't have AR-15s in there as a patrol rifle. Every single one of our march vehicles has a patrol rifle. You know, if you get into a situation where there's an active threat, all, every single one of our uniformed officers is able to deploy an AR-15 rifle if need be. Where we fall short on that is our detective bureau. Our detective bureau's vehicles don't all have AR-15s in them. So there's a couple that are in the station in our armory, and if we have the time and, and the forethought to do that, when a situation like this comes in, they can go to the armory, they can grab that, and they can go where they need to be. Unfortunately, that's not realistic, in my opinion. To have them with them in their vehicle so that if they're responding anywhere and/or if they're at another scene investigating something, conducting an interview, or doing follow-up investigations, they can go to wherever they need to go and have that equipment available to them to save lives. The third thing, the biggest push or cost that's gonna be with this is red dot sights on the handguns. It's a new and emerging technology. You think about a, a long gun where you're using sights, iron sights, a holographic or a red dot sight is something that's gonna give you quicker target acquisition, and it's gonna allow you to follow up a little bit quicker if you have to take additional shots. It's a newer technology. It's, it's starting to emerge around us, Erie County. You've got, I believe it's Orleans County, Genesee County is, is thinking about, or is in the process of transitioning as well. But it's, it's just something, the technology, just like with the patrol rifle optic, is emerging, and it's gonna be the latest and greatest for our officers to, again, increase accuracy. And that's pretty much my, do you have any questions about the firearms before I move on?
Yes, I have a bunch of questions here. One, Chief, I did, I don't know if anyone else received it, but you had a justification in the attached memo from Sergeant Mark Lawrence, but I didn't, never received it.
That was a very, very long document that I forwarded out to the manager's office, and, you know, it goes into the details and the weeds of what the actual study from the FBI was, along with some other studies that were done in the area. So I just felt it best to leave it out of the packet, because it does go into the weeds on, on that type of stuff, and from the level that we're looking at at this point, I didn't think it would be beneficial to the council.
Okay, the next question. How, how old are the Glock 22s?
So they range, our oldest, we have ten that were purchased in 2015, we have ten that were purchased in 16, and then we had a little bit of a, we had only one in 17, and nine that were purchased in 18, and a few in, in 2019.
And there is a trading value to those in this program as well?
Yeah, it takes into, the cost takes into consideration, I think it's about a $230 value for the trade-in of the current firearms that we have.
Yeah, I understand the 40 caliber now is getting a little more difficult to obtain and procure, and the cost is, like you said, higher, and it's probably gonna be going up higher. But the next question, do you, does anyone on the force have any experience with red dot sights?
There's a couple officers personally with their personal experience, but, but nobody as far as a firsthand knowledge and/or experience with it, just what studies and what a couple of the agencies are doing.
Okay, my, my question's based on, you know, the, the red dots makes the weapon a little more fragile, and it's a pretty, can, you can knock the sight out of alignment. I have a red dot sight, I've had it for quite a few years, depending on which handgun you put it on, but, you know, I'm just curious if anyone had any experience with that. Maybe it wouldn't be more prudent to buy a couple red dot sights first, and then see how it works out.
There'll be a test and evaluation period of anything that we purchase, especially along the lines of new and emerging technologies, as Chris had mentioned. We wanna make sure that we're getting the right thing for the members and for the community, just not to go out and spend money and hope that it works.
Right.
We'll definitely go through a tending period.
You know, I agree, red dots increase your accuracy and everything, but if you didn't have the red dots, then you could use the same leather for the holsters, 'cause the 22 and 17 are same dimensions.
And also, too, if I could put a little input there, the holsters that we're looking at have a spec, they're obviously designed to basically protect that red dot. So the way that they're shaped, that's a main issue for getting a newer, a new holster, is to help kind of cover that red dot to protect it.
And then with the ARs, do you issue the AR per car? Is that how it works?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Well, yeah, you have my full support. I think that the Police Department need every tool, that they need the best of everything to keep us safe, and to make sure that these idiots out here, there's a lot of idiots out there, and they know that they can't mess with City of Batavia.
Have you considered the co-witnessing with the iron?
Yeah, so traditionally, how we train now is, we actually qualify both with iron sights and the optic on our AR-15 platforms, and the theory is, we're gonna continue with that, just as the, you know, as councilperson.
So you'd be able, will you be able to see the iron sights through the, that's the common way to go, then if the battery goes, you still have sights?
Correct. Correct, but also making sure that we don't lose the fundamentals, making sure we still understand, you know, the sight picture sight alignment, everything that's needed to shoot with iron sights with a handgun. But as I mentioned, we, we do that with the patrol rifle, just because, to, to your point, sir, you do have instances where a battery will fail, or a sight will get, you know, off-target, so with the co-witness, you'll be able to make sure that everything is on target.
Well, and the transition is easier. When you're used to iron sights, if they're still there, you can use those, and then the dot will line up. If you're trying to just find the dotted, it could be troublesome for a beginner, but I think you're on the right track.
Thank you.
Those batteries go without any warning. One day it works fine, the next day it's gone.
The one I was looking at today, 50,000 hours, five years of continuous time. So every year on your birthday, you replace the battery, just like your smoke detectors, and you should never have a problem with that since it's malfunctioning. But, good job. I think you did your research. Good job.
Agreed with that. I'll move on to the next.
I have one question for the manager. Rachel, on the VLT money, is that a use it
or lose it type of thing, or?
No, it's not. It would then, at the end of the year, when we do the audit committee, it's just part of our revenue that came in. It just was never accounted for in our budgeting. So we see it now as somewhat of a windfall. It certainly helps with overages in expenses and special programs like the ones offered by the Assistant Chief and the Chief. So nope, that revenue is recorded, and you can actually see it in the financial statements.
Right, I remember it recorded as income, but I didn't, do we have it now?
We have it, and we hope to have it again this year, so we'll be writing the Assembly member and new senator.
We should get more this year, they said, record earnings, so. Thank you.
So the other parts that we have are a community speeds display signs. As the manager mentioned, we're looking to purchase speed display signs that are mounted through coals, rather than, we have one that's currently mounted to a trailer that's mobile. There's pluses and minuses with that. We can take it wherever we want to, as long as we have a spot, spot to park the trailer, excuse me. And then there's a battery life, obviously, associated with that, because it's not plugged in all the time. The signs that we're looking at, we would mount in neighborhoods designated areas. We have a couple in mind now, but we'd be certainly looking for input from anyone out there regarding the mounting of these. But they are LED display, you've probably seen them in some of the towns that you've gone through, where it blinks, you know, if you're going too fast. So it's a, it's a visual reminder. It's also a calming issue on the streets as well. So we received quite a few requests over the last few years for our mobile speed trailer, which, again, is a little bit limited, and we don't like putting it out in this type of weather. Not too bad right now, but when the snow gets real deep, it's hard to get it out. We had it across the street from your, your house for a little while, and I guess the grass got pretty large around it, so we don't have that issue either. So that's what the speed display signs are. And the last piece of this is our street surveillance cameras. As you guys are aware, we purchased several of these over the last few years, but they are aging. It's technology. So it's just like a home computer, or a laptop, or a tablet. You have to replace parts every now and again to make sure that it's functioning. We do have, our, our stuff is aging, it's out in the elements all the time. We use them all the time, as our detectives can mention to you, they use them almost on a daily basis in helping with assault crimes, and they're very, very beneficial to the neighbor, to the neighborhood. So we're looking to actually upgrade a few of those cameras, or all of those cameras across the board, and then purchase an additional camera with this one. So, any questions up?
Questions?
Chief, any chance we could get authorization from the utility company to attach these to utility poles, for example?
The speed signs?
Yes.
Or the street cameras?
The, uh, speed signs.
The speed signs, yes, they would be attached to a utility pole.
Okay, that'd make your life easier.
Yep, these are, they call them semi-permanent, because you, they're just cabled to the pole. You can actually move them around if you want to. We're looking at one that has, that has a solar powered battery design, so we're not plugging into a pole, asking for electricity at the pole, and we don't have to take it down and recharge it on a regular basis as well. So we're looking at those type of designs.
And the other question, the past several months, I'm sure we've all heard a lot of complaints about people's driving habits, speeding, all sorts of things. And it's kind of amazing, just on my short drive here tonight, I had someone pass me coming up the hill by the blind school in a no-passing zone, and then I observed one vehicle blow two stop signs, and people seem to, do you know why people are driving a lot more careless now, or is there any?
Wish I knew the answer to that. I have no idea, but I got passed in the exact same area you're talking about in the school, when the road was under construction. I was lucky enough to have an officer in the area, were able to get the car pulled over and explain to them that you can't do that. But, yeah, I have no idea why.
I think COVID made people a lot dumber. It really did. It's not such crazy the way people drive.
I don't understand it. When I used to drive the police car, I never saw anybody do anything.
In your life, with red dot signs, you don't see any?
Everybody always behaves when they see the black and white in there, and then when it leaves, it's, you go crazy.
They're going down now, COVID is something.
Chief?
So hopefully, we can figure that out.
Do you, the speed signs, are those the ones that have the flashing lights, too, if you're going too fast? Do they?
Yeah, there's different options that you can get for the signs, so I'm assuming that there'll be, there'll be some type of a visual warning, whether it's the speed actually blinking to, to show you that you're going too fast, or slow down sign.
Because the one that we have on the trailer, that has the lights on it.
Yeah, that has some lights on it.
If you're going fast, the, the red and blue lights flash, and it, that actually is, I think, very effective.
Yeah, it scares the heck out of me.
Well, it does. It draw, all of a sudden, you see lights, and everybody immediately puts their brake on anyway.
I've never seen them flash, so I don't know.
Well, I observe it all the time, because I actually go down 98 almost daily now, and I literally set my cruise at 28 to 30 miles an hour, just to slow them all down behind me, because those trucks come barreling down there. I, I really, when I saw this in our, I saw this in our pamphlet, and I thought Oak Street better be one of the ones that are on that list that we're gonna put it on, because that's.
That is one that came to mind very.
Yeah, Oak has always been a.
Yeah, it's just nasty.
It's a straightaway.
Yeah.
Any, any other questions?
I'm glad we're gonna be getting more cameras, because we really need that.
Everybody, everybody benefits from, from us spending this money. There's not a citizen in this city that does not benefit from the additional safety that all of this money is gonna create, so.
Anything else you wanna ask?
Thank you very much.
So are we in favor of moving this to tonight's business meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Canaly. Hold your role, please.
Councilwoman Bailey?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Okay, I now call for the regular business meeting. Any public comments?
Nope.
The next city council business meeting will be held Monday, January 23rd, 2023, at 7:00 PM, City Hall, Council Boardroom, second floor. And Mr. Byakowski, you've had a concern about the Amazon tablets.
No, I didn't have a concern. I just liked some information, but one of the things I find, apparently, according to this update, where the tablets have been purchased, and we're gonna change the way we're doing things, I find it a little puzzling that none of this came to council first, and somebody made some decisions here to go forward with it.
We did. When we talked about the whole ID upgrade, and we spent thousands of dollars for the software, we talked about buying tablets for code and, and other employees, including ourselves, as needed. We didn't know there were gonna be tablets at the time, but we knew we had a new system, and that was all part of the upgrades. I remember talking about it. We were, we weren't sure if we were gonna get laptops, or.
have been purchased and, uh, we're going to change the way we're doing things. And I find it a little puzzling that none of this came to council first and somebody made some decisions here to go forward.
When we talked about the whole ID, uh, upgrade and we spent thousands of dollars for the software, we talked about buying tablets for code and, and other employees, including ourselves as needed. We didn't know there were going to be tablets at the time, but we knew we had a new system and that was all part of the upgrades. I remember talking about it. We were, we weren't sure if we were going to get laptops or iPads or whatever. It was kind of up in the air at that point.
Right.
So that's, we talked about it.
I just assumed we'd be, you know, when we narrowed it down, it'd be a little more specific and, uh.
Well, it's operational. It's kind of like we're on the city's email and they, whatever they do, we, we hook into. I mean, that's, it's changed a few times, I think. I mean, that's why I remember it. I'm not trying to interrupt, but I mean, correct me if I'm wrong. I thought that was, it wasn't detailed, but I mean, that's the impression I got with, that at some point we were going to go paperless and not have police officers delivering packets and wasting their time and they could be out, you know, writing tickets on Oak Street instead of delivering our mail. There's a lot of man hours that goes into that. And I, I complained about it 20 years ago when we used to do it. I didn't think it was appropriate then as an officer to be knocking on doors and delivering council packets. I just thought it was.
Council did have tablets once and it failed. It didn't work.
They had computers, I think, because I remember fixing a lot of them back in the day.
No, they, they had small tablets.
Well, did they? Oh, it was beyond my.
You had one, Cassie.
Small tablet.
Yeah, you know, small computers. Brought them into the council meetings and.
No, we had, we, they had computers. They actually had a laptop computer in a leather case and I remember.
Maybe it was a laptop then. I'm sorry.
Yeah, and, and that was just, I think that's way more than we needed. I mean, this device is a purpose device basically for email and city documents and we're connected directly to the city's network by using them. So there would be no reason of any virus being on them or anything because we're not browsing the web. You're just checking your email and you're transferring documents and so forth. So.
Yeah, Council President Jankowski, let me just, uh, explain a little bit in detail because you're right, Councilman Byakowski, we did not discuss how this was going to happen, but we're going to do a slow rollout. The goal is to train each one of you perhaps in one of the budget meetings, at the end of one of the upcoming budget meetings on how to use a tablet and how to get the documents that are going to be on the tablet. Um, and then over the next three to six months, we'll slowly, we'll continue to deliver you the, the council packets as we have, um, and until you get comfortable with the tablets and we hear from you guys that we're okay in transferring over. It's going to be done, it's basically, lack of a better term, like an airdrop where we'll be able to just to drop this into a, into a file that's going to show up on your tablet. You click on, it's like an app on your, on your desktop. You're going to click on that and boom, the update will be right there for you to go on and read and check and, and do that with it. So it's not something that we're going to just say cut, dry, we're done today. Here's your tablets. When you guys are comfortable, when we've gone through the process and we've worked out the kinks to the same point that the chief was just talking about with, with the changes in, in the, um, sidearms and that, we're not going to move forward till everybody's ready, but that's kind of the goal of how we're going to move forward with the tablets.
Okay, I, I had a couple of tablets myself, but, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's a no-brainer, but myself, I still prefer paper, write my notes, underline things, circulate.
And I totally agree. I have the idea of being able to make notes and bring it in.
Yeah.
So now in the future, I guess I've already thought about it. I'll be reading the document on the tablet and I'll have my notes in a separate piece of paper. When I go to that page, I'll have, I'll have hold. I mean, I'm just trying to figure it out. Until we get them, I won't know, but I'm willing to try it and see how it works out and I'm going to go for it.
And again, as Eric said, we're going to wait till everyone's comfortable. And if someone still wants paper, we're happy to have it printed at your desk and available. So you may read it in advance, but then have the paper copy on your desk or ready to pick up. But the time it takes to prepare the packets and to get them over to the police department and then out then individual houses could definitely be a time saver for multiple employees. So that really was the entire goal was to see if this could work and to trial it like a beta test. And, um, like Eric said, if someone's not comfortable and it's not working, we'll, we'll work it out and make sure everyone has the information they need to come to council and make the decisions you do every other week.
When I was on the planning board, we used those tablets to give us head. Everything was there immediately. You get it, you've got plan, you've got diagrams, photos. Matter of fact, the way they had it set up, we're on the planning board and if we had to, for example. Go look at a property, you might get an arrow. Are you planning that for us? We can, we can follow the maps like the DPW does?
So it may not be as advanced as that as an Apple. The tablets we purchased, um, to start off with are HD Amazon Fire tablets that cost roughly a hundred dollars a piece that have like the first thing you'll see is your agenda. So we'll start dropping agendas in. So the minute the agenda's ready, we can scan it in and drop it to your folder. So you could get them as early as Wednesday afternoon instead of, um, again, because we don't have much in terms of property and links to property. Um, but I'm sure there's a way to get on and check GIS on there or ProServe.
Or we could provide photos as part of what's dropped into your folder for that.
Oh, yeah. Well, you could do a photo, but I'm like, I wonder.
Yeah.
That's, that's paid for. They come and pay for their server.
Right.
I mean, if it sometimes it works out so good, we could actually, you know, maybe buy better tablets and hit more connectivity to it. But right now, I agree with starting small. I mean, you buy a thousand dollar tablet, it doesn't work. It, it's a lot better to try the hundred dollar version and if it works, we can upgrade.
This is in Android.
Yeah, it's like a Kindle almost kind of looking.
Now, staff did, um, department heads did get Surface Pros. We're trying to use to go electronic as well. You can see how great I'm doing at that. Um, so I'll be transitioning as well with you, but some of the newer tablets have the ability to write directly on the screen. So I can write my notes here, then I can save it into a file and look back on it and start reducing the amount of paper generated specifically in my office. Um, so I'm, I'm trying as well as you guys.
Will our tablets have that capability?
Not the ones we got in the first ones.
We'll take them back.
Well, Rachel, here's another question. Are we going to be able to save these agendas? Like so now in the, in the past, I mean, you got piles of agendas. Now we could flip back on our own Kindle and see maybe a month ago, what was the agenda at a certain day? So that, so that'll be constantly saved versus where do these end up? They end up in recycling, I guess, right?
Sure. Mine, mine, I have a pile. I bought a file cabinet and it's full and now I'm starting to pile. And I've only been on council like 13 months. So I have a literally a pile this high between these and all the agendas and I read, because I've saved every paper I've ever received. So if it's a tablet, especially because I do make a lot of notes, so I'd love to have the ability to write on it, but you're going to save a lot of time and paper and we're going to save a lot of space. I'm going to save a lot of space in my house. You guys, but I have every piece of paper and I do look back on them and I prefer to have it electronically.
Will it be saving it on the tablet or will it be going to a, another storage server?
It'll be saved on your tablet. It'll be dropped into the, into the app on your tablet as an individual document and just every time we do it, it'll just be another document into that app. So you click on that and you'll see all the agendas that are in there and you just click on the one that you want or need and go from there.
How much more would it cost to get tablets that we can write on?
So these ones that we purchased were about a thousand dollars and the, the Kindles were about a hundred. So for all of council, you're looking at, you know, about $9,000 or so.
Maybe a good use of water because you're going to save $9,000 in paper in about two years.
Yeah.
Time. And it's just, it's, it's so much paper. Like I said, I'm overwhelmed in 13 months and the amount of paper and the binders and the books and the price and all of that is going off. And I think you're going to need enough storage to save all that too. So if you purchase a hundred dollar thing and in a year from now, you got to turn around and purchase a thousand dollar thing. Now we've wasted a hundred dollars on each one. So to waste a thousand.
Well, we already have the tablets. So you will be getting those no matter what.
So those aren't returned.
We're right. I could hand it to you today if you.
Oh, okay. Because you got to, you know, how much memory is going to be on there to save.
Well, it's, it's an airdrop thing. So the memory will be there that you need. It's like an app.
So the, that sits in the cloud, correct?
Yeah.
The document.
Yeah, so you're logging, when you click on that app, you're actually getting it from another place and you're reading it on your app. So if your app, if your app, your little tablet crashes, your documents are still saved somewhere, I assume on the, you can launch the app and you'll get right your documents back.
And you make your own files and save things. Or it's just a.
I'm not that familiar with the app, but I would imagine you can, yes. It's frequently used.
We need to start somewhere. So start with.
I'm willing to start and see if it's feasible. Let's go.
You're still going to re, you're still going to reduce the amount of paper we're using dramatically. All of this will be gone. So I know, I've been on council now 11 years, so I know how much paper you have. So my drop studio is filled with these and binders. Now, would we be able to get the budget on that?
You could, but I would prefer at least the budget book with the numbers in it. We call it the spiral. You may want to still have that hard copy to flip through to write notes on. You could cer, it can certainly be dropped in there. Any document can be dropped in there, but there may be certain things that we do still hard copy on.
Mostly because it's really fun to make those budget books. I mean, we got, I mean, it was coming at some point anyway. You had to know.
I, I think it's great. I, and, and, and it's not going to be a lot for us to have to encompass at, at one time as well. I mean, you need to make notes. You, now you can bring a little, you know, spiral notebook and make notes and you got little spiral notebooks instead of piles of this.
And I tried saving mine and after a while I, I couldn't search it. I couldn't find it anymore. So I mean, it was like, why am I saving this stuff? There was no way to look for a keyword and search it. So, all right. Any, any other questions on that?
I'd just like to comment, I agree with, uh, Councilmember Schmidt. Maybe, maybe all this could have been resolved if we had a open discussion before the purchase was made rather than going out purchasing them. You know, myself, I'd, the one that you can write on, I'd definitely prefer that. So hopefully we don't go through this in the future. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Okay, we have a public hearing. For Restored New York Grant. So a motion to open the public hearing. Mr. Canaly. Seconded by Mr. Bailey. Call the roll.
Councilmember Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Okay, all speakers should have signed up in advance with the clerk. Each speaker will use the podium. Is there anyone signed up to speak? Okay. Anyone else like to say anything that forgot to sign up to speak? Okay, a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Canaly. Seconded by Mr. Bailey. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Okay, public hearing is closed. You've all received a copy of the November 2022 financials. Are there any questions, concerns, omissions, problems that you found? Okay, are we in consensus to approve the November 2022 financial?
Yes.
Okay, those are approved. You've also received the copy of the 2022, December 2022 minutes. Any questions, concerns or omissions on there? We in consensus to approve the December 2022 minutes?
Yes.
Okay. We have a few agenda items today. Agenda item one, 2023. Mr. Richmond. Number two, 2023, the collective bargaining unit. Mr. McGinnis. Number three, 2023, the, um, sale to Can Sports. Mr. Byakowski. And number four, 2023, the resolution authorizing the city manager for the equipment of the police department. Mr. Canaly. City attorney's report?
Yes, Council President. Nothing specific to report on this one.
Okay. Any questions for the city hearing? City manager's report?
Thank you, Council President. Just very briefly, the biggest news coming out of last week in the new year was that the city was successful in obtaining congressional direct spending for a $2.5 million grant to assist, to assist with the building of the police facility. So very excited that our representatives in the Senate, Schumer and Gillibrand, as well as the former representative Jacobs fought for that money to go through in the federal omnibus legislation and it was signed by President Biden. So very exciting news to move forward, um, with the police facility and we, um, we hope to come back with a financial plan to you as we get more information on cost estimates and go out to bid because we won't have true cost estimates until we actually go out to bid for the project.
Anything else?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Any questions for the city manager? Good job on that.
Thank you.
Excellent job. I never, I never would have thought of it myself. So thank you for.
And Sean did a lot of work helping with the narrative. So.
I did my best.
Good job.
Clean the dollars.
Any committee reports? Any unfinished business? Okay, resolution one, 2023. Mr. Richmond, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to schedule a public hearing for the round seven, Restore New York Communities Initiative, municipal, municipal grant.
Seconded by? Any questions for the consensus? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Richmond? Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Council President. Yes. Point of clarification. There is a slight discrepancy in the narrative on the agenda that says to schedule a public hearing. It's actually to file an application, which is correct in the actual resolution. I just wanted to point out that clarification.
So it's a file an application to?
Yes, the resolution is correct.
Not for a public hearing?
The title was incorrect.
The title may have been picked up from the last agenda when the public hearing was scheduled.
Right.
This is, the resolution the council has acted upon is to submit the application.
Okay, gotcha.
Didn't we have the public hearing already?
That was a different one.
This was the public hearing you just had tonight.
Yes.
The title was incorrect, but the resolution is correct.
It says a public hearing for restoring.
Right, and that's what I thought. And I was like, why are we doing, I thought it was another thing.
No, it was an error in the title. So.
Well, basically, what are we, what did we do there?
Authorize the application.
We have to read it that way? We could. No, he read it that way. It's written.
No, the resolution is correct. Just the title that was referenced at the outset on the agenda.
Okay, so we had the public hearing, now we can proceed.
Yes.
All right, we're out of here. But, uh, two, 2023, Mr. McGinnis.
Thank you, Council President. Excuse me. I move a resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement with the Police Benevolent Association.
Seconded by, Ms. Briggs. Any questions or concerns?
Yeah, just one question. When is this going to affect?
April 1st, 2023.
It's our fiscal year.
Any other questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?